You guys ready?
This meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of October seventh, two thousand twenty-four was published in the Korean News and Star Ledger and placed on a borough's website. Notice of this meeting was also placed on a bulletin board at Borough Hall with their complete agenda. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher.
Here.
Teresa Bonner excused, Glenn Denis.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Room.
Here.
All right. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask everybody just to remain standing for a moment. I think most people who are involved with the borough intrinsically have heard the news that Bernie Nevada passed away. Bernie was a very unique gentleman. I don't know that there was many other people that loved this borough as much as Bernie did. He dedicated his entire life to this borough. He was our planning board chairman for thirty-plus years. He was Somerset County's planning board chairman for about the same amount of time. His goal in life was to help create a community that his children wanted to come back and live to, uh, live, live in. And, uh, and he succeeded. Bernie was a good friend. He was a colleague. He was a mentor. He taught me a lot of things. And his thumbprint is on most everything in this borough and in this county. This county and this borough developed over time, over the last thirty years in a manner that was well thought. Bernie understood how communities should be, and he strived that in every part of his life. His wife Barbara, his, his daughter Maggie, his son Joe, their wives and, and their beautiful grandchildren will miss Bernie greatly. He was not big in stature, but he was a mighty big man. And he, uh, he had those piercing eyes and that, uh, that witty grin when, when he was up to something. And, uh, I think we're all going to miss Bernie Nevada. Bernie, thank you for sharing your life with Somerville. Thank you. Thank you. Kevin, I would just also ask that the borough flag be posted to half mast for Wednesday and Thursday. Bernie's wake is on Wednesday and his funeral service is on Thursday. Thank you. Okay, a motion for approval of the minutes of September sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Glenn Denis.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Room.
Yes.
All right, departmental reports and notices are as listed. Let's go into committee reports and we'll begin with Tom.
Okay, first of all, this, this coming weekend, October twelfth and thirteenth, is Weekend Journey into the, into the past. Be sure to check out the Daniel Robert House, better known as Borough Hall, and the Fire Museum. There was a problem at the Fire Museum with water coming off the roof, landing on the balcony and running down the facade of the museum. This has caused some rot and damage. It may be possible to install a second gutter on the neighboring roof, which would prevent water overflowing onto the Fire Museum. We will also have to repair the underside of the balcony. The Historic Advisory Committee discussed plans to demolish the Granite's building as part of a redevelopment proposal discussed at the planning board. The Historic Committee feels it would be wa- wise to involve them in this process. Historic Committee member Harold Willard was honored by Congressman Tom Kane as a Senior of Distinction. And Sunday, the twentieth, at three thirty P M, it will be the dedication of Shob Park, which is the park on Cliff Street, just across the, across the creek from, well, or excuse me, just next to the Brookside Apartments. It's on this side of the creek. And that's all I have, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Gina.
Uh, the Somerville Rescue Squad continues to maintain good service to our community. They will be participating in the annual fire inspection ceremony and day on Saturday. The Board of Health Commission met recently. They, um, the members of the commission are taking on some new programming for two thousand twenty-five. So each member will bring some new health programs to our community. So we look forward to seeing their good work.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn.
Okay, so the fire department, I think it's already been mentioned here too, but the fire department has its annual inspection day coming this Saturday, uh, October the twelfth, starting at three thirty at Borough Hall. You can come there for a small ceremony and then they will parade going east on Main Street. In addition to that, uh, just mark your calendars. I know it's a little soon to start talking about this, but December the seventh on Saturday, starting approximately at six P M, we will have our annual lights parade as well organized by the fire department. And, uh, many people love coming out for that one, so put that one on your calendar. Uh, as far as the Environmental Commission, uh, soon we'll see and hear from Jeffrey Lamborn, so I won't talk much about that now. But, uh, I will mention that the Electric E V Show, the second tie we partnered up, uh, was held at the recent street fair to great success. And then also on, um, part of the journey through the past, our very own Jerry, uh, one of our environmental commissioners, will be reading a poem at the Wallace House. Come there at, let me just double check, at one thirty, uh, for the second anniversary of the planting of the Salem Oak there. There will also be other music and activities as part of that. Uh, also, hot off the presses, I just found out we were awarded a grant from the Arbor Day Foundation for eighteen thousand dollars for trees, and that is also with some volunteer support from MetLife. And we will be meeting here next Tuesday at seven o'clock. That is the eighth of October.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Reddy.
Thank you, Mayor. The D S A is hosting a Pink Out for Breast Cancer event, October seventeenth. Dine and shop wearing pink in our local participating businesses, and a portion of all proceeds will be donated to the Steeplechase Cancer at Robert Wood Johnson Somerset. This Saturday night, the Haunted Horseman rides into Somerville. Tickets are available on Eventbrite and at the check-in table, which will be at the clock by the Somerset County Courthouse lawn. Tour begins at six thirty and departs every fifteen minutes until the final tour at nine P M. Enjoy an hour-long tour and feel free to shop and dine with one, some of our wonderful businesses and restaurants in our downtown. That is all.
Thank you. Roger.
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Not gearing up for fire inspection?
I, I mean, we're, they're ready to go. They're ready.
Um, just a couple of things. One, the, uh, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And if you noticed downtown, there are a number of pink ribbons, uh, uh, all up and down Main Street. We had an organization called, a nonprofit organization called Dance for the Cure. About a week and a half, about two weeks ago, we met, uh, at the, at Borough Hall and, uh, and we put ribbons up all around the, uh, the, the triangle of Borough Hall. And then the following Saturday, Sunday, uh, they actually brought in the Somerville High School cheerleaders. And, uh, they put, uh, pink ribbons all up and down Main Street. And, uh, it was just, it was nice to see. They just fanned out all over Main Street and, uh, it was good, creating awareness, uh, for a, a better, healthier future for everybody. So I'd just like to thank them. And then very quickly, just in the last three weeks, we've had four different grand openings of stores, uh, in downtown. And, uh, I just think that's, that's absolutely wonderful. You know, the mayor's job isn't always, always just cutting ribbons, but when you do four in, in three weeks, that's, uh, that's a lot. And, uh, and it's, uh, it's a, it's a sign of a healthy Somerville, and, uh, and I think that's good, so. Up next, we have a, a discussion regarding Main Street tree plantings. And Jeff Lamborn from the Environmental Commission, the chair of the Environmental Commission, is going to do a presentation. He's also got some members of the Environmental Commission here with him. You can come up, um, just as a, by way of background. So I'm gonna dial back twenty-plus years. And Rutgers Blaustein School of Planning and Policy had done a study of main streets in New Jersey. And, and they rated them. And what they did is they took in all these different dynamics. They took in street width, sidewalk width, parking, um, facades, closeness of the buildings to the streets, and, and tree canopy. And they threw all of this into the mix and they spit out a rating. And, and Somerville, I was trying to look for it again, I couldn't find it, but Somerville came in number two or number three in terms of main streets and, and their likability and their presentation of their main street. So over the course of the last twenty years, we've had this ongoing discussion regarding main street trees. And, and what's interesting is everybody has a good point. And, and we're trying to come up with this mix of, um, aesthetics, tree longevity, tree maintenance, safety of the sidewalks and the limbs, um, healthy trees. These trees were all planted about thirty years ago, and I shouldn't say all, a, a majority of them were planted about thirty years ago. And we've gone through fits and starts a number of times trying to figure out how do we create a forestry plan that keeps the aesthetic or even improves the aesthetic of our tree canopy? Because it really is beautiful in the, in the summer when it's blazing hot, you've got this beautiful tree canopy. The short trees that people are putting up in all these new projects now, they're little short scrubby trees. They're not great. They're just, you know, I don't like them. You know, we have a canopy and you don't find that on, on many main streets in, in many areas. So we've had these fits and starts of, you know, how do we, do, do we cut down the unhealthy trees, the ones that are heaving sidewalks? So we've got these issues, but we also have this overarching competing interest to make sure that we maintain the aesthetic of our beautiful downtown. So, um, this is, I think, the, the third time we're, we're, we're going at it. And, and I just said to Jeff, I said, I think we've got good level heads at the table who understand those, they're not competing interests, they're, they're all interests, but it's, they, they raise and lower, um, depending on the tree. Each one has their own set of, of unique challenges. So in my discussion with Jeff, uh, and with Glenn, Glenn is the liaison to the, uh, to the Environmental Commission, you know, I said, a lot of people come to downtown Somerville for different reasons. Some come for the food, some come for the cars, some come for whatever. I would love to have some people come and say, come to downtown to say, you gotta see these trees, they're beautiful. So, um, that's kind of the, the overview. I'll turn to Glenn, see anything?
No, I, I mean, I think that.
You said enough?
I think, no, I think that, that summarizes it pretty well. And I think one of the things that came up in all these conversations was just starting to acknowledge how they are really a valuable part of the infrastructure. And they do provide so many different things, whether it's, you know, increasing the value of your store because people are willing to stay there because they're not blazing hot. Or just that viewpoint and that aesthetic of that sort of tunnel effect when you get going down Main Street sometimes where the canopy is really truly healthy and, and pretty big there. Um, and then also all of the different things as far as, you know, helping, uh, reduce stormwater in all different places. I know, you know, downtown has a lot of pavement, but still we can, you know, still do a lot to, to help reduce things like that there as well. So I think just acknowledging the, the value that they do provide, we sometimes sort of take it for granted that they're just there. And it's really way more than that. So we'd like to continue that and improve it if we can.
Good. Jeff, you're on, all right?
Well, thanks, and I appreciate the introduction. I, uh, when I started on the commission five years ago, uh, that was the latest tree walk that we did at the time, uh, in two thousand nineteen. So I want to make sure I get the presentation up on here. But, uh, thank you, uh, Brian and, and Glenn and, and the rest of the council here that, uh, have had experience with talking about trees in general. I think Roger Gribble is the only person I haven't spoken to about a tree in town yet in particular. But much like, much like us, uh, the trees are considered individual parts of what, uh, the storefronts and the business owners and, and the residents of the buildings above, uh, have, uh, in front of them. So I do hope that we can build upon, uh, the forestry plan that we have, uh, which is to say, uh, we have a pretty low bar to begin with. But with level heads, I think we can really move this along nicely. We're putting a lot of effort in. I have great support here from a handful of my commissioners that are helping me, um, make this a worthwhile presentation.
Thank you for coming, by the way.
Without further ado, I can, uh, I plan to take about ten, maybe fifteen minutes of your time to talk about our, what we experienced recently on a tree walk with a licensed tree expert, a fellow named Paul Cowie. He is an urban forestry expert with, uh, expertise in, uh, Manhattan, uh, Jersey City in particular, and many other projects where, uh, he can, uh, has a lot of tips for us how to maximize what, what our trees are currently and how to take care of the ones that we do have. As, as we've learned, uh, over the past five years, it, it's an expensive endeavor to replace a tree downtown. So let's make a plan to make it last, and that's what I hope to, to do today is convey what, what we advise for our plan, that the borough can consider and, and how best we can maybe make this an effort, so. I don't have the presentation on my screen over here, Kevin. Is it able to pop up? Okay, great. I think I've got it right here. Excellent. So my cursor, my mouse goes here. And, uh, it doesn't look good from the beginning with the misspelling, but trust me, the presentation's worthwhile. So, um, thank you again for your time.
It's, it's just in the presentation mode that's causing that, but.
Okay. I believe it, I believe it. So anyways, uh, just to reiterate our mission statement on the Environmental Commission is we're here to educate, advocate, and promote, uh, best policies and practices for the borough's environment and the health and safety of its residents. And, and we believe trees, especially the street trees downtown, are, are in that mix. So today we'll be talking about, uh, these topics, general information about the scope of what I'm referring to here, recent assessments in the last five, actually ten years now, uh, current conditions, what's next, and, and some recommendations on how we can move forward, uh, from our perspective at the very least. So in Main Street, um, there's about eighty-five trees, what we consider to be the downtown district, which, uh, stretches from the western boundary of the War Memorial in front of Borough Hall, where Main Street splits, to fire engine number one, uh, and that's on the eastern boundary. Most of these, I, I think you're probably more correct in this term, Brian, they were planted thirty years ago or so. The best guess for our tree expert was twenty years ago. I just didn't know at the time, so, um, but we've, we've seen these grow and, and get to a point where, um, they've been planned for a lot of it. There's not a lot of diversity in, in town. You can see that by the sixty percent that's relative to one particular species and as it breaks down from there. There are, and as you can see in this photograph, tree fences that are protecting most of the trees on western Main Street. There's buried electrical lines, those overhead lines are not a concern, so we do get to plant larger species as a result, and we can see that, that happens here. As you move along towards eastern end of Main Street, there are no fences around the trees and no overhead utility wire, or there are overhead utility wires. And what that does is it, it reduces what trees we can plant there. But, uh, we've got a good list of options and, um, this isn't that list here, but, um, looking forward to sharing it. So in the last ten years, uh, we've had, uh, a lot of assessments. The first two were completed by our planner on staff, uh, Michael Cole and Associates, and, uh, resulted in a streetscape replacement tree plan. That didn't follow through so much and, and in twenty eighteen, we, I think, uh, the feedback from the E C at the time and the D S A was we need to have a professional licensed tree expert, and that's what L T E means on these two. Take a look at those. In twenty eighteen, the, uh, the colorful chart that's listed here is what he produced in addition to a report letter. Color coded for what needs to be pruned where and where the issues are. Red for highlighting of what probably should be removed or at the very least taking some serious consideration to it. And, uh, when we did our tree walk, uh, most recently in two thousand twenty-four, uh, a couple of weeks ago with, uh, Mr. Paul Cowie, that turned into, actually some of them are okay still, surprisingly, but it's one expert versus the other. So, uh, we're always, uh, understanding that we know what we know, but licensed tree experts are the, the expert in the field, so hopefully they can tell us what best to do here. Between those, uh, a two thousand twenty-three capital improvements plan by Arturial is what we recommend using as a guide for the downtown district. And they didn't have a licensed tree expert, but they did have good recommendations that I'm gonna reference here in the presentation. So some current conditions of what's here in town. Most, for the most part, we're in good shape, um, but, uh, it's time to take some action here. So pruning in particular is necessary. There are some trees that have reached or are nearing, uh, what is considered a good remaining life expectancy, and they should be removed. The, uh, pavers that you can see in the center photograph here are heaving in a lot of trees. That's a sign of a good tree making good progress, I should say, but at the same time, um, they, uh, it's a, something that can be a tripping hazard, unfortunately. So, uh, these need to be addressed and there's many of those across town. These tree fences are protecting in a lot of ways, um, but they are large, as you can see in the other photograph, and obstructive to a lot of, especially restaurants and places that, businesses that want to use, uh, the sidewalk space for their own. So, uh, we have our recommendations for how best to do it. Uh, other mentions here in the tree conditions in particular. We've noticed that in the past three to five years, a lot of the plantings are, have been smaller in size. Japanese tree lilac and calorie pear. The Japanese tree lilac is the one featured here in this photograph. They just aren't faring well. We've learned a couple of things such as, uh, soil space is a lot of it and, and that's at minimum four hundred cubic feet, which to put in perspective, if you're putting a tree about four feet down, which is typical, uh, that means you need a ten-by-ten area around it that is inclusive to be, um, have the soil engineered or otherwise replaced to be something better suited for the tree to grow. And I think we've noticed, uh, a lot of these smaller trees just aren't, aren't making it nowadays with what's there. It's not to say that those flush mount grates are the problem, uh, there's ways to make it work, but, uh, once you get below the side of the surface, that's where things matter for the trees. And, uh, there's a rendering of what, uh, the edge apartments are here in town. We believe that, uh, those trees that have been placed and planted there are undersized, they're also not growing well. And there are really too few compared to what is on the opposite side of the street, uh, where we do have a really nice canopy. So to jump into what's next, um, uh, we, we recommend updating the tree inventory and assessment here. Um, a, Paul Cowie, as I mentioned, is providing proposals together for his pricing and, and what it takes to perform this. And in addition, he'll help us create and, uh, we would like to implement, and we think it's wise to implement a long-term tree service plan. And this includes training the D P W on how to maintain these trees for pruning. They, uh, they are, they are smart with it, but, uh, having a schedule in a way, uh, is something that we would like to put forward. The hea- the, the, the heaving pavers, um, and, uh, in general, the tree grates, uh, and fences are, uh, the fences in particular are probably wise to remove if, uh, we can maximize the, the space that we do have downtown. And, uh, in particular, when we go to replace it, putting a proper construction specifications together for what should be done, I think is gonna give us the best bang for the buck for the longevity of these trees. That includes selecting the trees ahead of time, um, not just, and when they're received, making sure they are in good shape to begin with. These are investments that are in the ballpark of, uh, tens of thousands of dollars, uh, when you do consider how much construction has to take place to put these in. So, uh, we think that it's wise to spend the time to make sure that the specifications are appropriate and followed. And, uh, we do have an updated species list. I think there's been about eight or so for the past six years. Timery, how many species are we at about now? Eight and thirteen approximately are what we're recommending, and that includes large, medium, and small trees. And, uh, while we prioritize many aspects about it, I think the D S A is gonna have, uh, there, we'd like to hear from them and, and have them vet the list to tell us what, what they think is most appropriate, because, um, it may be a stinky tree. It may be a tree that has leaves that, uh, fall too often and too frequently. And, uh, we want to make sure that we do get ones that match what the desires of the storefronts and, and the business owners are, uh, in particular. We want to make sure also that the planning board is taking a look at the trees that are coming through for new development and, and that they are approving ones that are appropriate for the space. The capital improvements plan that's, uh, pictured here is, is, uh, something that, uh, has a good guide to follow. If, you know, we are planning to make this something to go through in downtown, they do talk about what's the best way to make, uh, make that work here in town. So here's what we recommend for our short-term plan. This is broken down into two categories, next twelve months, uh, which would end, uh, essentially around this time next year, and then one to three years for short-term after that. The D P W has gone through removing ivy on trees. That's something that was nice to get done to properly evaluate the condition. They can, the ivy can choke the trees as well over time, so that needs to be removed. We recommend having these pruned at the advice of our, uh, recommended consultant licensed tree expert and, uh, remove and replace the priority dead and unsafe trees, and there are a handful of those. As the Environmental Commission, we've, uh, completed a list of trees, replacements, species for review. Uh, and, uh, what we will be doing with a licensed tree expert is, uh, completing the best practices for how best to remove and replace these. Same with the, uh, fence and grade options that can, you know, manage and, and see what's best for, for what we have in town. To council, um, we don't have numbers to talk today, unfortunately. That's something I'd like to present or, uh, over email or otherwise, is, uh, what the cost is to hire licensed tree expert and, and make a replacement plan for three to five trees per year to be taken out. It, what that allows us to do is, uh, prevent a fallout of many trees that are the same age in town, uh, currently, with sixty percent of them being one particular species planted at one time and thirty percent being another species at another time. They, they are susceptible to dying around the same time. So we don't want to have it where there's a blight of any kind, where we have to take out ten to fifteen at a shot, and, uh, all of a sudden we have a big gap and, and a high, high price tag to pay in that place. So, uh, we think that making a plan for three to five trees a year is wise. Going forward beyond that, um, it's executing those plans, um, with the administration and the D S A, uh, recommending budgets and perform the removal of these, uh, tree fences and suitable sidewalk replacements, uh, for those. The D S A is also recommended and, and we would happily support and adopt a tree program. And, uh, whether they be business owners, individuals, uh, in town or, or whoever, uh, take a look at trees and, and evaluate them on an individual basis and help us understand what is, uh, the condition of these, uh, in case we do miss it. For instance, tr- uh, some of these trees are, uh, falling into the street where trucks are, um, uh, running into them, uh, when they do park or otherwise. And, uh, if that's not reported or seen very quickly, it can turn into a hazard and, and, uh, just in the interest of public safety, making sure that's taken care of as quickly as possible. Um, and for, lastly, for the D P W is to manage the replacement and removal of these operations and implement these service plans. Going forward, long-term, three to ten years, we see, uh, a consultant, uh, performing a tree assessment every three to five years. And then we take, uh, have the administration and the E C take action based on the recommendations there. More of the same for the D P W and the E C, it's just manage the replacement of these. We don't think this is a complicated thing. It's just simply a matter of putting a plan together and, uh, and from conversations here, it sounds like there has been one, but it hasn't been followed through. So, um, I, I would like feedback maybe from the council on, uh, what is the best way to make sure we do stick with the plan that we do put together? Because that's something that, while on the E C, we can try. because that's something that while on the EC we can try to, you know, recommend and make a plan for it, how does it get executed? So that's something that we look forward to. And in conclusion, these street trees do a lot, do a lot more so than just look pretty. They're a wonderful thing to have for what they, what you see and what you feel when you're downtown. They're walkable. Paul Cowie referenced a study where businesses are able to, it's not the right way to say it, but are able to price their goods and services seven to nine percent higher than, than Mount Main Streets that don't have a nice tree canopy and successfully get customers that really do appreciate what's there. So we think it brings an economic benefit. Environmentally speaking, air quality is wonderfully, wonderful thing to have. They reduce stormwater runoff when they're, especially when they're paired with green infrastructure options that are around them, and they keep the temperatures down. But we think overall they're beautifying our town and we recommend we maintain them as best as possible. And as always, because we're a volunteer organization here with the borough, anybody who wants to get involved, please do reach out to us. We are available on social media, through email, or just reach out to the borough and get ahold of us, so. With that being said, I want to say thank you for your time, and we hope we can make a plan. If you have any comments or discussion points, I'd like to, would love to hear it and take these back for our monthly meeting. That's actually tomorrow.
Great presentation. I think you captured, we did the walk around about three, three or four weeks ago, and it was, it was good. I mean, it was, I, I think we all learned a lot from each other in terms of, you know, the different trees and, and with the tree expert, he actually, you know, there were trees that we're looking at saying it's fine, and he's going, ah, it's not really fine. This, this one's in, in tough shape. And a couple that, you know, are in really tough shape. So it was, it was, it was a, a great walk around and. So any questions, any concerns, any issues, anybody? So what I, what I found interesting from the tree expert was it's not even the water that's the big issue getting to the tree, because that, he said, they'll figure out how to get the water. It was the air, it was the oxygen. They needed air. And I like the idea that, you know, we talked about having a tree grate, but it's much larger, which then allows for more air, more oxygen, more. It, I think we have an ability here to, to craft a plan. With the outline that you've presented, we begin crafting that plan. We can look at, from a financial standpoint, perhaps sharing that cost with the DSA. That's my job to tell them that they have to share it. And, and let's craft it. Let's, let's craft that plan. I, I think some of it really has to come from the environmental commission still. Probably a lot of it.
Sure, yeah.
And I think, you know, over the course of maybe the next, well, three months, and, and, you know, from a budgeting side, we can at least begin thinking about how we're going to handle that through DPW and how best to make sure that it's followed through, that it's, you know, because pruning is done on Main Street. You know, the last time we had full-scale pruning was probably six, seven years ago, I think, full-scale pruning. You know, they'll come in and do, you know, the low overhangs that are, that are popping out, but. Yeah, we've got to take care of it. It's one of our assets.
So Brian, in respect to the tree inventory, I believe that there is funding with the community forestry department of the state, so I think we need to look into that. I think that could be really helpful, and I also think that we really need to get more out of our developers in our community. They come in, they do a great job building our community back up, but I don't think they do enough on the environmental side. And I think we've really got to figure out a way to get more green infrastructure, more tree plantings and, and and environmental needs built into their development plan. So I would encourage that we as a government body look at that moving forward. I know we're getting into planning, so. But I, I think those are key, key takeaways and, and, you know, again, I'll always commend the work of the environmental commission. We have a really bright group that, that spends three hours every month at the table just discussing these issues, and then they're active in the community throughout the month, so. They, they have their hands and pulse on what's going on and we need to listen to them.
And we appreciate that. I guess I'd like to know, you know, does anybody in the council remember ten years ago, we had plans and otherwise to replace a lot of trees. What were the roadblocks? What, what can we do differently? You know, how can we get ahead of these?
Well, I think you've done a great job changing mentality, because there was a time, Brian, where I remember that all the trees were going to be cut down, and we fought that battle and.
That was never the case.
And then they got, then the trees got pruned.
Therein lies the issue.
And then the trees got pruned and, and we're still, then we got a three to five tree replacement agreement, which was moving forward, and then COVID hit and then, you know, finances changed for DSA, so. We do have to move that forward.
Yeah, it, the plan back in seventeen, before I moved on, was about three to five trees a, a year replaced, because the fear then was we'd have a blight. And, you know, we got, similar, we got all the heads together and we did a walk down Main Street. And, and you're right, it wasn't done with a licensed tree expert. It was done with, you know, some quasi-professionals and representatives of council and planning board. And it just, where it went, because I, I left in eighteen, so it just kind of evaporated. So it, it's, it's actually where I had thought it would be back in seventeen, and had we begun it back then, we'd be.
Talking about how we have been doing since.
Exactly. Yeah, it would be a different conversation. So, you know, look, you have the plan of attack. I, I think your, your synopsis is spot on. I think you've created this outline that we can begin both from a council perspective and a planning board perspective. Beginning to tackle. You know, we're, we're going, the timing is impeccable, because we're, we're going through this process now at the planning board of, of looking at planners, so we can look at our master plan. And then we can look at the redevelopment plans as well. So the timing is very impeccable that this now can all coordinate, not just within a policy perspective, but maybe more importantly from a master plan perspective. That's where, that's where the basis lies, and then figuring out, how do we make sure it gets done every year? That's the challenge.
Sure.
And I don't have an answer for you yet, but that's a challenge.
It's going to take a lot of people to make a lot of effort, and we appreciate your support. I mean, we, we do this for the borough and, and with, with your help and your counsel, we think we can get it done, so.
Well, thank you.
High hopes.
No, I don't think they're high hopes. I think they're realistic hopes and, and, you know, because it's, it's, you know, there, there's, we're, we're looking at it from a whole bunch of different perspectives, which I think is the difference. I think there's an understanding now that there is a safety perspective, that there is a commercial perspective. There is an environmental perspective, so we, we, I think we're beginning to marry those, those perspectives together, and that's what will make this successful.
And I, I think holding everybody accountable.
Yeah.
You know, I think keep showing up at meetings. We continue to do the good work, and we keep paying attention to, you know, what, what the findings are. And I think just, you know, that check and balance is so important, because otherwise, when everyone stops checking, then no one's balancing.
Yeah, for sure. Well, we'll be here. I'm relatively young, so count on me being around a little more.
We thank you. We thank the envi, the environmental commission and, and the ladies from the commission who showed up as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to open the, oh, sorry, I skipped one. Mayoral appointment, making the appointment for a planning board class four member with a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-six to Giovanni Manilio. He'll be sworn in at Wednesday's planning board meeting. I will ask a, for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved?
Discussion, roll call.
Glenn Denis?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
All right, public portion is now open. Please state your name and address for the record, and please address your comments to me.
This one?
Yes.
Geraldine DiSappio, forty-six East Main Street. I just feel moved to stand up here, first of all, and tell Jeff how proud we are of him and the work he does for us all the time. Secondly, I just want to say yesterday's fair, the street fair, was really so well-attended, and I think I was particularly excited because Timery and Rebecca and Jeff and Sandy and Helene, I mean, what a team, put together a great interactive activity for the public, and we, we have tremendous amount of data about the environment, what people think, what people want, their concerns, their, their happiness about certain things. So we're going to use that data, and it's going to inform some of our activities going forward.
Good, excellent.
Really great guys. And the other thing is, thank you, Councilman Denis, for mentioning Wallace House. It's tradition that people come out and take photos with their children about, with the tree, and that we measure the tree's growth every year. So that's kind of a traditional thing we do, and I hope people will come out to support that. And the last thing, and we has, we spent hours and months discussing Parkview and its intended use, perhaps as a playground for children, and we were very concerned about the health of the soil. And we went on about this with you, with council, for many months, and we haven't heard anything. And I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, if you could bring us up to date about the status. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close public.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Glenn Denis?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
All right, public portion is now closed. In regards to Parkview, what I can tell you is that we've had discussions in executive session, because we have been speaking with the developer. And at this point, we're not at liberty to talk about that yet, because we're still trying to finalize exactly what is going to happen with that property. We've been working with them. I'm hoping in the next meeting or two, Colin, is that about correct? Two, two meetings, we'll, we'll be able to, to, to give some information on that. But unfortunately, right now, it's just, it's an executive session material, so, yeah. I would love to be able to give you more than that, so.
I'd love to hear more. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ordinances for introduction. Ordinance number twenty-seven forty-four is amending chapter one sixty-six, section forty-six point one, entitled Schedule VA Permit Parking to Include South Bridge Street East Side from Southside Avenue to Second Street. Kevin, can you give us an overview on this?
Sure, Mayor. The, so what happened was on Second and Third Street about a year ago, the governing body decided to make that permit parking, and just like parking does, it's going to find a location where other people can, can move. We, we've been noticing Xena's office and my office of people coming in having difficulty on, on South Bridge Street. And the reason is because they can't park on Second or Third either, which, which means that the problem that was occurring on Second, Third has shifted itself onto Bridge Street, so it's making it a little difficult. So what will happen is this ordinance will enable just the one side of the street to have permit parking associated with their addresses.
Okay. I call it punching the pillow. You push it in one area, it comes out in another area. Yep. I'll ask for public comment on twenty-seven forty-four, if there is any. It's not something that we have to do, but it is a practice that, that, that I hold that we're not obligated to have public comment on the introduction of an ordinance, but I do allow it. Public comment is now open. Hearing none, we'll close public comment and motion for introduction, please.
So moved?
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, a que, question. Isn't the parking only on one side of that street at that part, that section?
That's correct.
So. Mr. Slukel was saying it's only, the, the restriction only applies to one side of the street, but that's the only, only parking there is on that street.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize if I misspoke, but the.
No, you, you didn't misspeak. It's just a little clarification.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Glenn Denis?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
All right, twenty-seven forty-five is ordinance number twenty-seven forty-five twenty-four one oh seven, amending chapter eighty, entitled Fire Prevention, Life Safety Increasing the Fee Schedule. This is updates on the fee schedules that are charged for fire inspections throughout town on various properties. Public comment on twenty-seven forty-five is now open. Hearing none, we'll close twenty-seven forty-five and motion for introduction.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Glenn Denis?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Twenty-seven forty-six is amending chapter ninety-five Housing Standards to Include Article Three, entitled Prohibiting Valet Trash Services. Kevin informed me today of what that is, and apparently some residential communities are, not necessarily here, but some in the state are beginning to offer valet trash, which means you call or email or text somebody in your housing complex and put the garbage in your hallway, and then they come get it and throw it down the chute for you. Yeah, I think that's kind of lazy, to, to be honest. It really is. So, plus, there's a number of issues behind it. One is obviously life safety, potentially fire, tripping hazards. Another one is obviously health for sanitary reasons and smell. So it's something that we would not like to see in, in, in our communities. So, public comment on twenty-seven forty-six is now open. Hearing none, we'll close twenty-seven forty-six and motion for introduction.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I kind of wonder that, that we need to do something like this. The description of, of what is prohibited in the, ordinance itself is, applies to something. I, I used to take the garbage out for a tenant I had, take it from, from the, you know, and some people, you, you've got to keep in mind that some people are elderly or infirm and might have, might have difficulty carrying their garbage great distance. Some of these developments, you've got quite a ways to go from the, from the apartment to the.
So Tom makes a good point. The, the ordinance does not speak to a paid service for this. So, I mean, maybe could adapt it in terms of that. I mean, I, I don't think there's anyone that wouldn't want your neighbor, your friend, you know, whatever, the boy next door to take the trash out, but do we want paid apartments?
I, I think the idea is to keep the trash out of the halls. That's the concept here.
Well, perhaps we ought to address trash being, being stored in the halls, because this would prohibit them from coming to the door and, and taking the trash from, from inside the apartment, carried out. Or, in my case, trash being stored outside a rental unit and just carried to the, out to the street.
I, I think it specifies service. Tom, I don't know if I would define your landlord just picking it up for you because you're elderly as a service.
But, but, so what's the point of this? Are we trying to prohibit a service from coming in and taking trash? Are we trying to prohibit people from putting the trash out into the hall for the service to pick up? Because if you're just trying to prohibit people from putting the trash in the hall of an apartment complex, it doesn't matter that it's a valet, that, that there's a valet service or not. You, then they would have to get the trash from inside the house. So, right, the point of this is, is, well, I guess that's what I'm asking, is the point of this just to prohibit trash from being in the hallway? Because we don't need to say valet service if that's the point.
So the va, so fir, first of all, the valet service, up until this was brought to my attention, I had no idea what it was. That definition that's assigned is assigned to us by the valet service that actually provides a service. So they, that definition is provided by a valet service that does this work. It, it does come about, the premise started with the fire official's office. However, it also leads to the health office as well. The fire official's office is, is, listen, we, we want trash to be put into a fire suppression system that is the chute, not the hallway, right? So the, and, and instead of having it sit in the hallway, and again, it might be text, there might be various ways. If you go online, you'd be surprised how many of these services exist, because, again, it was news to me until I looked it up. But the idea was the prevention of putting it in a hallway for the purpose of, of fire, but it also has. But the idea was the prevention of putting it in a hallway for the purpose of, of fire, but it also has the purpose for health as well. Because the trash needs to go from the multifamily apartment dweller to the chute, that's the intended use of that. Not into a hallway that either gets brought to a chute or gets brought down to a, a lower level. And these services, I'm sure they, they, um, provide a good service in the beginning, but again, those services, you know, are not something that we, we'd be able to enforce. So the value of this ordinance is to be able to make sure that we advise all the multifamily property owners that, that this service prohibited, and, and you cannot contract for it. And that's the purpose of it. We're, we're one of two municipalities right now that I'm aware of that are doing this ordinance.
But, see, what I, the way I read this is that you're saying the trash valet service can operate, but it's not saying that you can't put the garbage out in the hallway.
It doesn't even say they can't operate, it says that the landlord can't arrange for it.
So if we, we don't have a valet service that picks up trash in a hallway, you're putting in the hallway for what purpose?
You don't want it put in the hallway, right?
That, that, that's correct. What I'm saying is, we could write that in there, but if you're putting trash in the hallway with no service, that's already a violation, right?
I, I don't, I mean, I don't know, do, do we have that as a violation? I, I don't know.
You can't put trash in a hallway of a multifamily and have it just sit there.
Well, it doesn't mean it wouldn't happen, right?
That's correct, but it'd be in violation of a health code, I'm sure.
The tenant could put it out there, because it's, because according to the, uh, ordinance, it says, it says new landlord shall permit, contract, or allow trash valet service.
So this ordinance is saying that you, you, we will not allow valet services in town, but it doesn't say anything about not putting garbage...
The way valet services get charged is the tenant pays for it. So what happens is the landlord adds it on to their rental agreement, and that's how they customarily get paid, based on my understanding of researching valet services. I, I can add whatever clarity we want into the ordinance, saying you can't let, leave trash in your hallway, right? We know that already, but we can add that in there. We could add that...
That's, that's already covered under our health...
That's already covered.
Yeah.
This is basically, you know, we could add paid ser- we can add whatever clarity you want, but I mean, the other, the other uses are already not, are prohibited, right? A valet service currently is not pro- a trash valet service is not currently prohibited in the borough.
You know, again, i- if someone hires someone to take their trash from their apartment door to the suppression system, the, the main trash can, w- why should we care? What we should care about is that the trash isn't sitting in the hallway.
Yeah, well, I, and, and I'll agree with you there, Gina, that, you know, if, if they knock on their door and say, give me your garbage, and I'll go throw it out for you, that, that's, that's fine.
Right.
But, you know, to, to leave it outside your door...
And that's not what a valet service does.
Right.
Right, you're, you're being asked to leave it outside, so the valet service can come and collect your garbage. They're not coming into your home, and they're not setting up in that manner. What, what I think has been mentioned before, and will be mentioned again, if you would like to have, or you have a neighbor or something, normally you coordinate that and you're not leaving it out. As was said, it's a, you, you're now have obstruction in the hallway, and with the, uh, you know, vermin that we've had crawling around town, uh, we don't want to invite them anywhere in our multifamilies, as well as our, you know, single-family homes. So this, this is just trying to get ahead of one of these organizations coming into the borough and setting a precedent.
So I, I think that where it says obligation of owner, I, I think there should be a, an additional sentence that says that, um, no trash should be left, be permitted to be in, left in hallways, um, or common areas. And then no landlord should permit, contract with, or allow trash valet service to operate. That, I, I think it needs to be clarified. Because you, you, you could have them not even having a valet service, right? You might even just say, the apartment complex is gonna pick up your garbage, everyone put it out to your door. If you don't say that there's no trash allowed in the hallway, then, then the intent of this is not met.
On the health board, have we received any comments about multifamilies leaving trash in the hallways?
Well, we didn't get this to go to the health board.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking as, si- because I sat on the health board. And during my time on the health board, I never got anything where, where the health officials had to go out to the multifamilies and check for this. That's my question. So what, what, what I'm saying is that it's a situation that we don't have currently, at least as long as I was on that board. And what we're trying to do is prohibit that from starting.
Well, how about we take this back to the board of health, then? I, I mean, I...
We don't need to, because it hasn't been a thing with them, that's what I'm saying. So if we, if, if no one's complaining that there's trash in the hallway, we're, we're saying that we don't want this valet service to start that problem.
And, and, uh, what I'm trying to say is, you don't need to have a valet service to have trash in the hallway. That's all I'm trying to say. And if we're gonna make this, whether it's covered somewhere else in the ordinance, I don't know, but this is the one we're looking at now. And if we're gonna pass this, we should pa- make it more comprehensive, to state that there should be no trash in the hallway, because that's what this is intended for. And if you look at it one step further, like I said, if you wanted to hire someone to take the garbage from your door to the dumpster, you, you should be allowed to, as long as it doesn't sit in, in the hallway, but...
This originated from where, the fire department?
The fire officials' office.
Fire official, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we were notified by another, another municipality.
They see a potential issue?
Yeah, the fire official was notified by another fire official, another municipality, to take a look at making sure that we prohibited this before it becomes an issue, because, you know, if you do look online of the valet services, some of the buildings here could be candidates for that.
Yeah, all right. All right, let's drive this to a decision.
If, if you like, I could certainly add that line, and we're only introducing by title tonight anyway.
Yeah.
So however you please.
Yeah. So you're comfortable, Gina, with it just saying, don't put trash in the hall?
You know, fix the word, language up, but yes.
Make your kids take the garbage out? Is that what we're saying?
We're saying for health and fire safety, we don't want trash left in, in corridors and common areas.
All right, we'll, we'll craft some language. All right, uh, we have a motion and, uh, second for introduction, did we do that?
We, we did.
Yeah, all right, so roll call, please.
Glenn Dunne.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
So clarify, we're voting it amended, or?
No, it's just...
Introduction.
It's titled...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, number twenty-seven forty-seven, is it amending chapter one forty-seven of the Borough Code, entitled Solid Waste Management, requiring containers for the disposal, identifying enforcement positions. We beat this to, to death. Yeah, uh, essentially, it, uh, updates our, our trash ordinance, uh, with the requirement for, uh, I'll call them toters, because the, uh, collection equipment is moving in that direction. And, uh, and having bags out at the curb is, uh, is also attracting, uh, critters. So, uh, public comment on twenty-seven forty-seven is now open. Hearing none, we'll close twenty-seven forty-seven, motion for introduction.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I cannot support this. We, we don't have that, the need yet, because we still have a trash, uh, collection contract that accommodates picking up bags. As for attracting vermin, an open bucket of trash, I think it's gonna attract more vermin than a seal, than a tied up, up bag. And, uh, I think it, you know, we, we should try to minimize our intrusion into the lives of the citizens, not maximize it.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Glenn Dunne.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
No.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Okay, ordinances for public hearing and adoption. Uh, twenty-seven forty-one is amending chapter one sixty-six dash forty-four, Schedule III. No stopping or standing to remove two parking spaces on the north side of West Cliff Street, west of North Bridge Street. This is the corner of North Bridge and, uh, West Cliff, uh, it's the large Victorian. There are, uh, two parking spaces, uh, a little further west from the corner. The driveway for the property is going to be a real line to where those two parking spaces are. It will create a safer condition, because the current driveway right now is literally feet from, uh, the corner, from the intersection. Uh, the planning board has reviewed this, uh, this, this governing body has reviewed this, all felt it was, uh, was a very appropriate, uh, uh, thing to do. Uh, we may gain one space back, it, that'll be a field decision, once the driveway is in and the sightlines are looked at, and we can make that decision at that point. So I will ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
In stereo, thanks, guys.
No problem, here to entertain.
Uh, roll call.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
All right, public hearing is now open. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Glenn Dunne.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
All right, public hearing is closed. Uh, motion for adoption, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Glenn Dunne.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
All right, twenty-seven forty-three is amending chapter one thirty-two of the Borough Code, entitled Residential Rental Units, Removing Annual Fees, Five-Year Inspections, and Removing Attachment of Leans as a Penalty. This is an ordinance that, uh, that updates our, uh, annual inspections. It will actually create a, a better process for our administrative staff in Borough Hall in executing that. So, uh, motion for, uh, public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Glenn Dunne.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
All right, public hearing on twenty-seven forty-three is open. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Glenn Dunne.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
All right, public is closed. Uh, motion for adoption, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Glenn Dunne.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
All right, consent resolutions, I need to be pulled off for further discussion. All right, uh, hearing none. Two eighty-three is awarding a contract to Top Line Construction for Rehill Avenue Improvements, as noted. Two eighty-four is appointing Emma Giantisco to serve on the Municipal Alliance Youth, uh, Commission and Youth Services Committee, expiring December thirty-one, these, twenty twenty-four. Two eighty-five is supporting mid-block crosswalk improvements on Route twenty-eight, mile post two-point-seven-two, and mile post three-point-two-one, that's West End Avenue and, uh, uh, West Main Street. Two eighty-six is approving chapter one fifty-nine from the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund Grant through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the Department of Environmental Protection. Two eighty-seven is approving the sale, conveyance, and redevelopment of blocks, as, block as noted, in the landfill redevelopment area by Somerset Station Urban Renewal to Avalon Somerville Station Urban Renewal as a qualified developer, and authorizing the execution of a partial assignment and assumption agreement. Two eighty-eight is amending resolution, uh, two seventy-six, accepting the resignation of Jenna LaRusso, effective September twenty-sixth, end of business on the twenty-fifth, and authorizing final payment for four and a half days of vacation time, accumulated daily rate of two-hundred-and-twelve dollars for total amount of nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. Two eighty-nine is approving the hiring of Sarah Perez as payroll tax and finance clerk, effective November four. Two ninety is authorizing a refund of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty dollars to Lysella Garcia for land use application, as noted, for fourteen South Gaston Avenue. Uh, two ninety-one is accepting a grant of one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and sixty-three cents, and approving chapter one fifty-nine for the Bureau of Justice Assistance for twenty-twenty-four Bulletproof Vest Partnership. Two ninety-two is accepting a grant of ten thousand dollars and approving chapter one fifty-nine for the State of New Jersey Board of Public Utilities for the Community Energy Plan Grant. Two ninety-three is amending resolution, uh, three hundred, extending approvals and resolution of local support, resolution for local support for suitability of cannabis business to Route twenty-two dispensary for the issuance of a Class Five Retailer License at tense, at address, as noted, for an additional six months to March second, twenty twenty-five. Two ninety-four is intent to award a national contract through NPP Gov. to Bauer Compressors, Distributor Air and Gas Technologies, under NPP Gov. contract, as noted, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Two ninety-five is extending the time period set forth in resolutions twenty-three oh five oh one, one-five-four, and twenty-three one-two one-eight three-five-four, conditionally designated North Bridge Properties LLC as conditional redeceiver